Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 18th Fisher City Council Meeting. We do have some announcements this evening. Selena, do you have an announcement for us?
I sure do. This month, Fisher's Parks and Recreation is celebrating National Parks and Recreation Month by encouraging to pub- by encouraging to public to step up and explore our parks. Snap a photo of your park adventure and share it with hashtag #SuperJuly for a chance to be featured. National Parks and Recreation Month is also a great time to keep an eye out for Fisher's newest art installation, a hy- hydrophobic paint display. As a reminder, the art display is activated when it's wet, so head to the Nickel Plate District on the next rainy day for a chance to find it. Snap a photo of the display and share it on social media with hashtag #FoundAtFisher's for a chance to win a $100 gift certificate to Painting with a Twist.
Thank you, Selena. Any other announcements? At this point, I'll move on to a presentation of a 20 Years Service Award to- for Troy Fedinger.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, I'm Major Mitch Thompson, the Assistant Chief for the Fisher Police Department. With me tonight, I have Sergeant Troy Fedinger, and this is a special occasion for me because we hired Troy in 1996, and I was his sergeant. I was his FTO back then, and I recall specifically within the first couple of weeks, Troy and I were training together, and I was supposed to be the field training officer. We got a fatal accident on I-69, and he rolled up, and it was pouring down rain, and he looked at me and he said, "I got it, just sit right there." And he began working in accident, a fatal crash on I-69, in his third week with our agency, and I knew right then we had a really special officer with our agency. It was great because Troy came to us from Greenfield PD. He had three years of experience, I believe, when he came to us, and then that allowed us to tap further into Greenfield PD, and we gained a couple of other officers because Troy was the first one to come over. And this was back at a time where we didn't get a lot of officers from other agencies. And then that kind of started a cascade for us of officers, and now we're in an agency, 48% of our guys have come somewhere else, and Troy was one of the first ones to do that, and we're very appreciative. Tonight, I want to make sure and recognize a few- a couple of things with Troy. Troy is very much a family guy, and as you look out of the audience, his wife, Dama, and this whole big crowd back here are all family and friends that have come to support Troy tonight, and that speaks to the character of what he brings to our agency. He's always been that guy. He was a founding member of our School Resource Unit, something that's near and dear to my heart. He and Sergeant McFarland worked in School Resource, and he's also very engaged over the years with our Accident Investigation Team. He was also, I believe, a founding member of the countywide fatal alcohol crash team and was instrumental in getting that started for us many years ago. And then also, of course, back in 2014, Troy was instrumental in saving the life of a young man, 12-years-old who went into cardiac arrest, and Troy was there to watch the game, and he immediately summoned help. He and a doctor then administered a DFib that was in his squad car. Thankfully, he had that with him that day, and he was able to help save the life of that young man. So with that, tonight, we recognize Troy's 20 years with Fisher's, and this says, "In recognition and appreciation for your dedication and loyal service, the City of Fisher's presents a certificate to Troy Fediger. For 20 years of service, Troy, we thank you, we appreciate you, and we're looking forward to several more good years."
Thank you. Hey, John. I just want to say something. I just want to thank the- our Fisher's Police in the times we're living in right now and the stress that is under law enforcement on their shoulders in our nation. I just want to thank you for all that you do, the compassion you have in your job and the grace you go about doing it. So, just as a council, and just my family really appreciates you, and our community does, so thank you for all you do, every one of you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service to our community. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, our Finance Committee report. Eric, you have some things to report back to us?
Sure. Finance Committee met this past Wednesday, and the items that we reviewed and recommended for council approval are items 6A, 8, 11, 12, 13, 16, and 22. We got an update on the partial census. Enumeration was completed on July 13th. It'll take about 30 to- or 60 to 90 days for those numbers to be verified and authenticated with the Census Bureau. We will obviously have an update for you on solid numbers and the amount of capital outlay it took for that. The Controller's Office has been working pretty diligently most of the year on a financial transparency website called OpenGov. They gave us a brief demonstration on Wednesday, and I've asked them to do a demonstration tonight, too, for the full council and the audience members. Mark, please. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, my name is Mark Keating. I'm a budget analyst and a controller for the department. So I'll be giving you a brief overview of the OpenGov. Oh, sorry about that. I'll be giving you a brief overview of the OpenGov Financial Transparency Website that the Controller's Department has been working on, where to find it. So if you go under City Hall and then Controller's Office, locate under Financial Transparency, and then OpenGov. Now, it'll default to this view, and what this shows is just a high-level view of the different departments and the expenditures over the course of the year, and so far, we have January as the most updated data. If you go ahead and move over here to Filters, you can filter that by Funds and Expense Type. So you'll see the funds, Governmental, and the wastewater, which is our sewer and stormwater. And if you ever get lost or need to go back to the beginning, you just hit Reset. But from here, you can go into the different departments, so let's go into Fire, and you can see that this is all of the fire appropriation for the year. And if you want, you can go on to Expense Type and switch it up to see, you know, the Supplies, Contract Services, Training, anything like that that has been budgeted and spent year-to-date for each month. And then over here, we have the Annual Report, and you can see them from 2013, 2014, 15, and 16, how it compares to the 2016 budget. Also, we have some added details, as in permits. Some of them, you can see, you can break it down by various types, which is Apartments, Multi-Family, Single Family, and you can just kind of dive in and see that data on a year basis. So this is just some of what we have to offer. We're still working on getting this to be more user-friendly, so that way, the public can dive into it and really dig into it if they have any questions. And the Controller's Department is always more than happy to answer any questions from the department, or from the community and from the City Council. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Mark? Great, great job, gentlemen, and ladies.
This is a big step forward in our- the financial transparency of the city, and we think the residents and other stakeholders will find it extremely valuable. That's it for the committee report, John.
Any questions for Eric? Eric, thank you very much. Well done. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Ayes have it. We're going to have a change in our agenda order tonight. We're going to skip to- first item tonight is going to be Item 9, Request to Approve a Resolution Amending a Memorandum Between the Indianapolis Airport Authority and the City of Fisher's Approving a Concept Map. So I didn't catch anybody off-guard there, but we wanted to get these folks on with their evening.
Going to do my best fan of white impersonation. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Pull up this presentation. For the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. We bring before you today a amended MOU and concept plan. As you may remember, back in May of 2015, the city and the airport authority announced a partnership to put excess land at the airport into play for development, and then in November of last year, the city and the airport authority agreed through a memorandum of understanding to put 211 acres in play for development, and the city of Fisher's was responsible for develop- for developing a master plan for land use to be approved by the Airport Authority Board and the City Council. By the way, this process has been a case study for true partnership, beginning with Hamilton County Commissioner Steve Dillinger as the county's appointee to the Airport Authority Board. His vision to do something transformative with the excess land at the airport that had no aviation value after the airport authority revised its master plan and future vision for its reliever airports. Steve has really carried the flag for Hamilton County and Fisher's to make something spectacular of the land, and the airport authority's leadership between Mario Rodriguez, Marcia Stone, and Eric Anderson, who are both here, all of these folks have been incredible partners, and they truly understand the opportunity this land can provide, both the county as well as the corridor on 96th Street, and its regional impact as well. When putting this plan together, the city set a few goals that it would abide by as it determined what its best land uses would be for the community. It started out with a community listening session back in the winter where, for once, citizens were amazed that we had nothing to tell them and only listened to what they wanted out of this land, and we heard a lot of similar- a lot of similar values that we saw in the property, which was a true respect for Ritchie Woods, as well as the surrounding area, that it would be harmonious with what exists today, but at the same time would attract tremendous companies and talented individuals to the area. So taking those comments into mind, we set out to provide the city's version of the best, highest use for what we feel is really transformative land use that should be here. So, per the memorandum of understanding, the city now presents the master plan, concept plan for council approval. This map and project was presented Friday at the Airport Authority's Board, and it was approved unanimously. And these maps are shown on these two easels to the left and right of me. As you'll see, the layout here to the natural north, east, west, and south, the way that page is oriented, the area in green is dedicated as Parks Space and Open Space. I'd like to, right off the bat, point to the large amount of green space to the north of the map, just west of Ritchie Woods. This is roughly 12 acres, and in talking with the airport authority, we felt that this land had a tremendous value to be an extension, if you will, of Ritchie Woods, whether it be legally or constructively through easements or ownership. And the airport authority and an amended MOU, which is also provided to you, will be available to the city of Fisher's through either easements to access the 12 additional acres, as well as the opportunity at some point in the future for the city of Fisher's to purchase the land, and we see that as a fantastic opportunity to really expand and put Ritchie Woods and our green space on a- at a level that we can really show it off. So that was something that was a newer development that we had not discussed back in November. The other areas that I wanted to point out, you'll notice that the types and the color scheme here aligns with the 2040 concept plan, comprehensive plan, rather, and those have been integrated into this plan. We have a significant amount of employment node, that's the darker purple. These are the areas where we foresee good corporate entities with high-paying jobs locating to the area. We also have the lighter flex development, research and development, flex employment. We're referring to this as clean manufacturing, so that's something, again, to be contemplated as, given the proximity to Ritchie Woods, that we would not allow for any type of higher traditional industrial manufacturing. And then there is also designated at the southern tip of the light purple area, a potential park-and-ride. If mass transit materializes in the future, the plan calls for an area to be set aside for park-and-ride opportunity, so we've called that out in this plan as well. You'll notice that the map does not call out any retail. At this time, the city of Fisher's does not believe that retail is the best, highest use for the corridor. There's- the area directly south of 96th Street is currently zoned retail, so we believe there's plenty of that in the corridor, as well as on the other side of the interstate as you go east. With that said, these are the major core tenants, and again, the idea that was- the idea as far as our land use map goes is we wanted development opportunities that appropriately transitioned to Ritchie Woods Nature Preserve and was additive to Fisher's vision, as well as stimulating development that would encourage regional development activity and provide quality jobs for citizens as we attract talented individuals and corporate citizenry. This is the first aspect for the council's approval, the master plan concept map itself. In our discussions over the course of the past few months between November and today, the mayor has encountered a number of corporate citizens that were looking for more campus feels. These are folks that employ, you know, north of 500 that wasn't just looking for, you know, a building, they wanted to develop a campus. And given the fact that the amount of interest that we've had is so high, one of the things that we've- we've had folks discuss with us is, "We really believe that you guys can get it done. You've proved it with Stanley, you've proved it with Brayden, that when you guys- when you guys see a vision in a company that fits in with what Fisher's is and where it's going, that that can be a reality." So, given our track record to attract companies, we've gone back to the airport authority and discussed with them whether the original MOU that said, "Once we have this master plan approved, we take it to an RFP process," that maybe there's a better way to do this that involves the city of Fisher's being the master developer, so to speak, and that we can create nodes and niches as we attract these companies to land their 30-acre campus development, and placing them where we see fit on the map versus having a singular master developer whose only interest is to turn it around as fast as possible and potentially for uses that maybe aren't exactly the highest and best to our standards. So what we bring you today is both the concept map for your approval. This would actually increase the commercial inventory for the city of Fisher's by 10%, which is not an insignificant number. To increase the commercial capacity in the city by 10% is something that I think most cities would kill for, especially given our tax climate in the state of Indiana. So, part one is the concept map itself, and then part two is the amended MOU that states the city of Fisher's will, instead of putting it out for RFP, instead now develop a marketing plan to take back to the airport authority and bring to them, as they'll still own the land, to bring to them potential development opportunities that really align with our vision and who we're trying to attract and where we're going. So, that's a- that's a small change, as well as the dedication of the 12 acres for the expansion of Ritchie Woods through trail easements and potential sale at a future date. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have and would ask for your approval of the resolution.
Any questions for Brandon? I saw- go ahead, questions?
I know the one thing that I appreciate with this concept is the, I think you said the additional 12 acres for expanding Ritchie Woods. I know, or I believe it to be true, that all of us, in one way or another, have heard from residents about adding on to Ritchie Woods, so I appreciate that being incorporated into the plan.
Well, in actuality, I think we were- I think you and myself and Selena were at a public forum where someone actually brought that up, so it's going to fit right in, so that's really great. So, also wanted to take a moment to recognize our Commissioner Steve Dillinger for everything he's done for us. Every time we've worked with you, it's been, you know, whether it's 160 interchange or State Road 37, now the airport, your vision, your leadership over the years has been nothing but spectacular. So from the half of the city and half of the council, we appreciate your leadership, and on a personal, appreciate your friendship as well. So, thank you very much, Commissioner. Other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
The most.
Motion by Pete, do we have a second? Second by Todd. All's in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, folks, for being with us tonight. Look forward to working with you. Moving back to the scheduled agenda right now, we're going to move on to Item 7, Request to Approve a Resolution Approving the Fourth Modication of a TIF Loans of Documents. Item 7.
Thank you, President Weingart, members of the council. For the record, Chris Grisell, Attorney for the City of Fisher's. As you may recall, we had this item on last month's agenda, and the council decided to table this so that OMB could come and be invited and speak on behalf of this. I'll just give a brief procedural background, and then I'll turn it over to representatives of OMB. In December of 2006, the town of Fisher's issued taxable economic development revenue bonds in the amount of $9.6 million for the Britton Park Development TIF District. OMB is the sole bondholder. Payments on the bonds were to be generated by allocations of 75% of the property tax revenue generated by the TIF District through 2029. The purpose of the bonds were to fund approximately $7.6 million of development of approximately 104 acres located at the northeast corner of State Road 37 and 131st Street on the site of the former Britton Golf Course. Acquisition of the property was originally financed for the developer, Britton Park Development, by Old National Bank. Now, Old National Bank owns almost the entire TIF District parcel, and the TIF District has been slow to develop. To avoid default on the TIF bond, OMB has requested an extension to 2017 to begin making principal payments on the bond. There's no cost right now to this, to Fisher's, resulting from this proposed extension. So, with that, I'll turn it over to representatives of OMB for you to answer any questions and for them to give some more background.
Candid in defense of OMB, we did go back, and the direction to OMB was that they did not need to attend the last council meeting. So I just want to be the- make that clear, that that was communicated to them by members of our team, said that they didn't feel that they needed to show up, so I want to make sure that that's clear before any aspersions are cast, yeah.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Steve McGlothlin. I'm Executive Vice President, Chief Credit Officer for Old National Bank. I also serve as Vice President of OMB Realty One LLC, which owns some of the real estate remaining in the Fisher's Marketplace area. What we are distributing is some additional detail on the TIF modification as to why we need that. I think to start, we wanted to spend just a couple seconds going through just a brief history of the transaction on it. As Chris indicated, we were the mortgage lender. We foreclosed on the southern half of the property in 2009 and had to complete installation of sewers, which were approximately a mile and a half off-site on it. The TIF bond was for $7.6 million. The total cost of the infrastructure were a little over $11 million, so there was a shortfall that the bank funded, and we have been selling lots since that time. Really, it was middle of 2011 that sewers were complete and development was even possible on the site on it. There is a design in the packet that we distributed on it that shows our current layout. The entire southern half, which is south of the legal drain, has been sold out, and we are waiting on just the final turnover of the retail strip center, the second retail strip center by Thompson Thrift, which will be anchored with a Jimmy John's and a Wild Eggs. That turnover should occur in the next two to three weeks so the TIs can be completed with the goal of having people in there by Labor Day on it. On the northern half, which again is defined as being north of the legal drain on it, we have sold a large parcel in the back, that is to a hotel developer. The financing, we are told, is in place. I believe they intend to come into the city in the next 60 to 90 days with a formal plan on it. That land has been conveyed to the hotel operator on it through a closing as of April 15th, and at closing, I can tell you, there was additional funds available. If you've been by that site, Children's Learning and Adventure has recently started construction. That is approximately a 36,000-square-foot daycare. We have Taco Bell, we have Zaxby's. On the corner lot just north of Zaxby's, we have sold and closed on the land to Horizon Bank. Horizon Bank has delayed construction of a banking center due to the proposed improvements on State Road 37, as it's proposed as a ride-in, ride-out ingress easement-type situation on it, and they're unsure how their drive-through will fit with the ride-in, ride-out access. At this point, I believe they're going to lease land with a targeted 2018 construction scenario. If you go north of 135th Street, I will tell you, I have on my desk a letter of intent to take the hard north corner there and divide that into a .7 and approximately a 1.5-acre lot. That .7 would be to a national retailer, and we've agreed on purchase price and everything, so I think that will be a go at some point. And then we have a finalized purchase agreement awaiting signature for the lot just north of that that would be a solid commercial use that fits the zoning. We're told no zoning requirements that developer has asked to, or that buyer has asked to be quiet until they're ready to come in also, and we're respecting that on it. So if you look at the overall property on it, if you include common areas and the four acres that was needed to HSE schools, we're about 78% complete on the 104-acre original parcel. And again, development really started in Ernst in 2011, and it wasn't until 2012 that we purchased the northern half of the property on it. As we said today, our assessed valuation is just over $45 million. Next year is- been published at $55.3 million, or $55.5 million on it, and if we complete the construction that is underway right now, we should generate in excess of $1 million in property taxes on that site, and this is a 75% TIF reimbursement. The city has the benefit of the 25%. The two questions that were really asked last month, from my understanding, was how the city of Fisher's benefit from the extension? I think first and foremost, this is at absolutely no cost. The bank has agreed through a settlement with a third party to pre-fund the additional $59,500 in additional interest on it. And I might make one correction to Chris's statement. We are not proposing interest-only, but rather $125,000 principal that will be paid on August 1st and February 1st, so $250,000 in principal over the next year in terms of where things are at. We're in a unique situation in that BNY Mellon is the trustee, and we are at the sole women trustee, but Old National Bank has purchased that bond. So while it is a bond, it is a loan on the books of Old National Bank, and that is, in essence, what we are here to seek a modification for in conjunction with our third-party guarantor that we reached a settlement with, as well as BNY Mellon on it. I think this also keeps the interest of OMB One Realty to complete the project. As I noted, we have a pending purchase agreement and a letter of intent for the far north end. We are prepared to put in additional $750,000 of improvements into the project to extend Bentgrass Lane all the way to the far north end of that project. If this TIF modification were not to be approved and the bond went into default, I think we would have a little bit of a different attitude and probably move to auction the property as quickly as possible. At present, I'm at 41% loan-to-value, and that is after an appraisal was updated due to the State Road 37 improvements and showed a marked increase in the time that it will take to absorb this property. We went from two and a half years to approximately seven years on the absorption on it. So that's a brief explanation on why we would propose this modification, again, at no- no cost. I think it's also too important to note that we have two events which occurred. I talked about Horizon and the fact that they are not going to build. It's approximately $40,000 a year in property taxes that we thought would be paying by right now, about this point in time. And also, we had a very disruptive fire at one of the flats at Fisher's Marketplace on February 5th. With assessments being made on March 1st, what we thought was going to be close to a $7.5 million, $100,000 property tax remittance payable this year became zero with that fire. We've worked with- We've worked with the group and they've obviously rebuilt and I think they are very happy with the leasing and the occupancy on that location on it. We would also propose in this modification that instead of an annual payment, we would move to semi-annual in an effort to reduce the overall interest expense on it. I think it's also important to note that we are under, I would say, a modest level of pressure to continue and move that property. I have to seek annual approvals through the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis to continue and own and operate that property. I will not be getting an extension past 2020 is what I can tell you, so we have every interest to try to move this property and develop it as quickly, but also as prudently as we feel we can. The last couple of pages in here are simply the proposed debt service. And as you look at this, you can see that if there is a red in the Britton TIF fund balance, which would start with the August 1st proposed payment, that is a deficit cash flow that cannot be covered from the existing funds. And again, we have paid approximately $730,000 of interest from a settlement. We have about $270,000 of funds left. Under the proposed modifications, which follows on the next page, you can see that the reserve funds are available and we have built in a quarter of a point increase in interest rates for each semi-annual period into the analysis on it. So in closing, I think we're dedicated to keeping this property going. We're about 78% sold on the property. We started in 2011 and '12, not the best time to start 104 acre commercial development, but I think we've made significant progress in requesting the fourth modification to the TIF in an effort to keep this thing rolling and again, at no cost to the city with $59,000 prepaid. We're prepared to deliver that to BYN Mellon as trustee tomorrow. I would open up for questions.
Sure. Any questions for Steve?
What's the reason that Horizon backed out? Is that because 37 is going to be redone?
37 being redone. They were actually in and met with the city engineers and they are there on the corner and as proposed is a ride-in, ride-out and there could not be assurances, this is coming from Horizon, so there were, the city could not make assurances to Horizon that their drive-through would not be impacted by a need to do anything from a condemnation imminent domain on the ride-in, ride-out access. And with the construction, those two factors, they elected to move to a lease situation for three to four years.
With 37 being approved, don't you think that's going to make it harder to sell this property?
I think it will, but I will tell you, we ordered an updated appraisal, actually January 1st, right after it was announced. That appraisal said that I was currently on pace to do a two and a half year absorption and that absorption will slow to seven years. So we believe it will be difficult, but the appraiser also, I think, did a very nice job of noting that the intersection of 135th Street, while ride-in, ride-out access, will have some of the best visibility on State Road 37 because as proposed, State Road 37 will go under 131st Street and that will limit the visibility where Lake City Bank is now and the retail strip centers that are there. I would also tell you that some of the early calls we have received have really moved to what I would call more destination purpose-type facilities instead of retail. And we've been encouraged just in the last two to three weeks with the activity we've had up there.
And if you don't make it by 2020, you liquidate it?
We'll see where we're at. I'd have the potential to appeal to the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis. They have really been very solid to work with, but they've indicated that is about the extent that they want something concrete. I believe it would be 2020 with a plan to liquidate in the next 18 to 24 months would be the approval I could get.
Other questions for Steve? Procedurally, we tabled this motion if I'm not mistaken, so we need to untable it if I'm not mistaken?
Motion to untable.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Well, just quickly, Steve, I want to thank you for coming up here and explaining this in full detail. Again, I think it was probably very good for some of the council members to hear some of this data, which some of the other council members who were sitting here longer didn't get to hear. And sometimes we forget the point at which they're at and how many times they've heard this explained. So I didn't want to see disengaged from you because I understood everything you said because we've already dealt with it quite a bit, but I think everybody here from the newer side appreciated your evaluation. So again, thank you for your time in coming up here and with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Pete to approve and do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Steve, great to see you again. Always, I work with Steve a lot with some of my clients, so great guy. Thank you. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, item eight. Request to approve a resolution to appropriate additional road impact fee funds, cumulative capital development funds, and sewer improvement funds.
Good evening, for the record, Oscar Gutierrez, City Controller. The resolution in front of you is request to, for additional appropriations in the amounts of $100,000 for road impact fees, $100,000 for cumulative capital development fund, and $100,000 for the sewer improvement fund. The reason for these requests is that we cash-funded projects from those appropriations in order to move forward with projects related to 116th Street intersection, State Road 37, and some sewer infrastructure projects that were being bonded. This body approved the resolution that would allow the bond proceeds to reimburse the city. As of last week, we issued the last remaining two bonds for State Road 37 and for their sewer in a total of $24 million. We now have the funds to be able to reimburse the city and appropriate the funds that were used, to be used for the purposes that they were originally intended to. This will require a public hearing, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Oscar? At this point, I'll open up for a public hearing. Any wishing to come forward, please state your name for the record. Seeing that there's no one to come forward, I will close the public hearing. Is there other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Todd, do we have a second? Second by Eric, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, Oscar.
Thank you, Oscar.
Moving on to item 10. Request to approve an economic development agreement for the Central Indiana Orthopedics.
Thank you, Mr. President. Picking up where we left off, wanted to present Central Indiana Orthopedics, call them CIO for short. CIO is a leader in the field of orthopedics and sports medicine and CIO desires to develop an office/commercial park in Fishers by purchasing and developing approximately 37 acres just east of St. Vincent's on 136th Street, which you can see from this aerial. If approved, CIO will construct a 40,000 square foot medical facility with clinical, surgical, and physical therapy, resulting in not less than a $12.8 million investment in real property and capital. Utilizing bond proceeds from their purchase of economic development bonds, CIO would pay for infrastructure improvements as shown on the general concept site plan and more specifically on this infrastructure improvement guide. As you'll notice, there's three phases. The first phase involves utility main extensions, main entrance road and roundabout, overall site and drainage improvements. That would be the initial phase of the development with CIO's property being in the southwest corner. Phase two would be a west road and bridge connecting towards St. Vincent and phase three would be east road heading east. The economic development bonds here are developer-backed, meaning the increment from the new 137 acre TIF allocation area would be used to pay debt service on the 25-year bond. The proceeds are 100% of the anticipated tax increment generated on the 37 acre site. Functionally, if there was a shortfall between debt service and the tax increment, CIO and its agents would pay for that delta as the bonds are not COET-backed. We last did a developer-backed bond, as you might remember, on the Sun King project. So it's been a few years since we've had one, but that's the main difference, which is a, you know, home run for the City of Fishers. The CIO group is going to basically turn land that was sitting up in this med tech corridor that had kind of, people were worrying was growing stale. We'd called it out as med tech a number of years ago and there hadn't been a tremendous amount of traction. And this group is going to go in there, set their, they're going to set their foundation, build their, build their headquarters and then create the opportunity for additional med tech businesses to place and locate on market-ready shovel-ready pads. This is a phenomenal development considering the much larger swath of land we're talking about was under one common owner and previously he had wanted to sell all of the land in one singular parcel, which made finding a good developer a little bit more difficult. This group was able to convince the property owner to split that and provide this 37 acre facility, which we anticipate generating somewhere in the neighborhood of $36 million in potential investment and we ask for your approval here today. We have a couple of members from CIO's executive team that I'd like to bring up here and they can explain to the council their vision and why they wanted to move to Fishers and maybe a little bit more about what they do and why they're here.
Thank you, Brandon. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner of law for Mr. Thagrey Baker Daniels and I'm very happy to be here tonight representing Central Indiana Orthopedics. With me from the CIO team is Carla Haas Settler, who many of you met. She's the CSO for CIO. And the president of the group is Dr. Nemu Surtani and I'm going to ask Dr. Surtani to come up and greet you and give a few remarks.
First of all, on behalf of our board and Carla, appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to get here. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your vision. This is a project that we initially thought would be a four to five acre project. It was difficult to find the type of land we wanted. We saw the area adjacent to St. Vincent's and thought that would fit perfectly with our vision and it's turned into the project you saw, board, and I just want to thank everyone for helping us move forward.
Thank you. Welcome.
Questions?
Hey, questions for Brandon or?
If I could add a bit of a colored commentary here. I've met with leadership from CIO over a period of time and extraordinary people, extraordinary business model, one of the few left of independently owned facilities. I think as we look just down the road in Brad's neighborhood, one of the fastest growing neighborhoods in Fishers is the 55 and older group.
You're saying there may be a lot of.
I'm saying there may be a lot of business just down the road. And I can tell you, when we get such an extraordinary opportunity to have a company invest in our city while at the same time unlocking a lot of potential growth around it, that's a win-win from my perspective and they're looking from a financial perspective to be able to buy their own bonds and do that at risk. So I think we found a partner, not just for this project, but for the long term and I think the development out there is going to be something we can all be proud of. The one thing that I would touch on, there's an improvement contemplated for 136th Street and Hamilton Southeastern Parkway that the city had partially designed prior to this conversation. We've ramped up and continued that design. It's an area that we've been looking to improve on, infrastructure anyways. That's one of the commitments in this project as well as that we would complete that road project. That's one component to this that we probably kind of glossed over, but it's an important element to the project.
Excellent. Other questions?
I'm supportive of the project, just curious about the other uses that might go along there. I assume there'll be some sort of accompanying PUD or something, but can you talk about both desired and then allowed that you anticipate within the overall park?
Steve, you want to take that? Yeah. Sure. So you'll see the PUD later on the agenda. So the property is currently zone C3. So the plan is, as its name is, Med Tech Park. So the intention is to have it available for other type of medical business uses. Really, it's in collaboration with the city with, you know, I think the city's been getting calls already about businesses looking for shovel-ready sites that would like to be out in that location. So I think it's going to be a collaboration between the city and CIO, but I think that they find a lot of good fits with a variety of different types of businesses as well as medical. So I think it's, you know, there's a lot of open opportunities there.
Great question. Other questions or comments?
The other thing, real quick, and I know we've talked about it a little bit before, but Scott, you mentioned 136th Street, which is perfect. I think you've done a great job putting those two together, Southeastern Parkway and 136th. But I know like we've talked about before, 136th Street, 269 is wide enough that you almost need a feeder street in between, which is what they have conceptually shown in the very beginning. So the idea would be that would continue as future projects, whatever shape that those come in, that would continue all the way to Central Indiana. And I pointed out that way just because, kind of the witness test I always have is that, you know, if you come in and you're doing a road and it's a road for public as opposed to just a drive coming in or out, I view this the way if that connects, then it's essentially a public road in the future.
That's correct. When you look at the depth of that particular lot from 69 all the way to 136th Street, it would be a rare project that would require that kind of depth without having some sort of road in between. So not only does that play into the long-term vision of the land that has its developed, but I think we also need to contemplate that in our thoroughfare plan and what that means for 136th Street long-term, whether or not some of the traffic gets shifted over to this new road that's being constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Any else? Well, we're excited to have you a part of our community. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion by Pete, do we have a second? Second by Eric, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome. Moving on to item 11 on the agenda. Request to approve a resolution for an amendment to the Myron A.J.
Again, Oscar Gutierrez, City Controller. Council President, if I may, address 11, 12, and 13 collectively as they're all structured the same way and address them as I go along. 11, 12, and 13, I'm going to attempt to explain to you financially why we're doing this and we have bond counsel here that can assist with any legal questions that you may have. What we are doing from a financial point of view is we are changing the backing of these three bonds from COET, County Option Income Tax, to general obligation. The city's general fund is comprised of both COET and general obligation, so it really is saying that we're going to cover it from the general fund should we have any shortfalls. However, all three of these parcels are now generating the tax revenue to support the lease payments. So the reason we want to do this is that we have a double A plus on our COET side and a triple A from our general obligation. So going out to market with a triple A will get us lower interest. So that's the first thing, the reason we want to do this. The second reason is with general obligation bonds, you're not required to have a reserve fund, which requires us to borrow less money so we don't have to fund that amount and it saves us money on compound interest for that reserve fund. And the last reason is to true up the amounts that we will owe on these leases, which will all be lower. And I will go one by one on what the amounts are changing to. This body had originally approved this agreement for Myron A.J. to be in the amount of $181,000 annually and it will be lower to $180,000. So it's only being lowered by $1,000, but it's savings nonetheless. For Loftus Robinson, there were two parcels of lease, one for the garage, one for the public lease. And the initial approval by this body was $942,000, which is being lowered to $674,000, which is significant savings. The second was initially approved for $366,000, which is now being lowered to $263,000 and that would be for Loftus Robinson. And the last one for Jaeger, the original approval by this body was $667,000, which will now be lower to $541,000. Again, this is the financial reason why we're doing this, ultimately taking it from COET to general obligation, better interest rates, no reserve fund, and trueing up the amount that we will owe. If there are legal questions, again, we have bond counsel here that can answer those and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about these three agreements.
Any questions for Oscar? Or by any questions for our bond counsels here this evening as well, recall. Chris, can we vote for all these at one time or do we need to vote for them separately?
Let's go ahead and vote for them separately.
Very good.
Thank you.
If I have any questions, I have a motion to approve item 11. Motion by Pete, second by Todd, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Do we have a motion to approve request of item 12, which is R 071816E. Do a motion to approve request of item 12, which is R071816E. Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Request to approve item 13, R071816F.
Moved.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 14 on the agenda, request to approve a resolution for an exemption from the UDO to allow for keeping chickens at Riverside Intermediate School for educational purposes.
Good evening. For the Director, Tony Bagato, Director of Planning and Zoning. The item before you is for Riverside Intermediate School to keep chickens at their property. The building is located on the area above. You'll see this Y-shaped portion of the building I'll point out here. They will keep the chicken coop behind that building area. According to the UDO, you can only, chickens can only be kept in two zones, and this property is not within any of those two zones. So they're asking for an exemption under the ordinance that the City Council can approve for other governmental agencies. Do you have any questions of staff?
Any questions for Tony or for staff?
Just for clarification, so the rest of the council here, because I don't think we talked about chickens here in a while, is to go ahead and let everybody know where currently we allow them, under what uses we currently do, just so the rest of the council can.
Yeah, they're only allowed on lots that are five acres and more in Zone Agriculture or Agriculture Residential.
Other questions?
I think Tony said right. I mean, this doesn't, if you approve this, it's just for this specific use, and it doesn't open up something else where somebody could come in and say this, yeah, I'm the part of that. So it's only five acres or the ag residential for this specific school use.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion approved.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Thanks, Judge.
Moving on to item 15, request to approve a declaratory resolution of the City of Fishers designated property known as 12115 Visionary Way and Economic Revitalization Area. Brandon, welcome back.
Thank you for having me. Apologize for my tardiness. We have a resolution before you concerning a ERA, economic revitalization. We have a potential to do some redevelopment back in the Northeast Commerce Park. We don't have necessarily anything finite to bring to you today, but we believe that there's imminent development in this area. And so step one, while we can't mention any names, step one would be, as you know, setting the ERA up on a declaratory standard, and then we would come back next month, hopefully with more details, to provide the council with a confirmatory resolution on the same project. This would be for a potential abatement for a taxable property in the area.
Any questions for Brandon? Do I have a motion approved?
071816H?
Motion by Pete, do I have a second? Second by Eric. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 16, a request to approve a resolution authoring the transfer of interest in real estate to the Fishers redevelopment authority.
Oscar Gutierrez, City Controller. The resolution you have in front of you is the last statutory requirement for the bonds that were sold last week in relation to State Rule 37. What this will do is it will allow the city to transfer property to the RDA and roads right around the property of 141st Street. So this is a statutory step in order to transfer property to the RDA in order to secure the bonds. And again, I have bond counsel here if there's more specific questions regarding the transfer.
Any questions for Oscar or for Rick Hall this evening? If not, entertain a motion approved. Got a motion by Todd. Do I have a second? Second by Selena. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Thank you, Oscar. Moving on to ordinance, ordinance 071816, request to approve a rezone for the Med Tech PUD from C3 to PUDC and a new PUD district ordinance and concept plan. First reading.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zaklikowski, a planner with the Community Development Department. The planning and zoning item before you tonight is essentially a follow-up to the economic development item that you heard earlier. Specifically, what the applicant is looking to achieve is asking you for a first reading for a rezone of this property from C3 to PUDC, which would include a new PUD district ordinance and concept plan. And this is involving all 37 acres on 136th Street, south of Interstate 69. As you heard earlier, Central Indiana Orthopedics will be occupying Lot 1, the item in the south, the area of the southwest corner of this PUD. And as was alluded to earlier, the medical facility is allowed right now by right in the C3 zoning district, but a request for a planned redevelopment was filed, which would provide the city with a vision for this property, and it would allow the applicant to seek some amendments from typical standards found in the Unified Development Ordinance. So in terms of some of the specifics on this petition, again, all uses are permitted on this property that would be used in the, that would be allowed in the C3 district. However, the following uses are expressly prohibited, and that would include items such as fast food or quick-service restaurants, drive-through restaurants, as well as any automobile sales and service. Just to give you an overview of some of the other items that are covered by the PUD, the typical setbacks are modified. Along 136th Street and, I'm sorry, along 136th Street, a 50-foot setback is required. And then along Interstate 69, a 30-foot setback is required. Any other setbacks would be 15 feet. The PUD would allow this outdoor meeting space that's north of the internal roundabout to be used as a signature feature that's required by the UDO. Some other modifications that the applicant is seeking would be some relief from the street tree and shrub plantings along the interstate. They would like some relief for plantings in electric easements. There is quite a sizable power line that runs north-south along the eastern edge of this property. And then lastly, they are seeking an allowance for an integrated center sign along Interstate 69. That would be up to about 360 square feet. So staff is supportive of the request, and will continue to work with the applicant to make minor enhancements to the PUD prior to the plant commission review. So we ask that you hold first reading, provide feedback, and send this item to the plant commission for their review. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Okay, questions? If applicant would like to come forward as well?
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, my name is Steve Harden, partner of the law firm of Thager Baker Daniels. Pleased to be representing Central Indiana Orthopedics before you tonight. I think Adam did a great job of explaining the overview. The real reason we're here was because of the power line easements. The exhibit that's in your packet shows, it doesn't show where the easements are, but they literally are on three sides. We have 136th Street on the south, we have power line easements on the east, north, along the interstate, and on the west side adjacent to St. Vincent's. And so planting trees in those easements are normally difficult. We can plant them, but they can cut them down. So we're hoping to be able to put shrubs and low-growing type of landscaping in there. And as the engineering team looked at the standards a little bit more, we tried to build in a little bit of additional flexibility to be able to create some additional assessed value on the property as we go along. And I'm confident we're going to work with staff to be able to work out any additional issues as we go along. Other than that, we respectfully appreciate your first reading tonight, and we'll take any guidance you have as we go to plant commission. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Adam or Mr. Harden at this point?
Yeah, John, a couple things. We're, I think it's probably known, but Adam, you mentioned a 30-foot setback along 69, and I just want to make sure, I'm sure everybody's looked at this, but 69 is, they're having that project in Dot Is. So does that incorporate everything that they're going to do? I don't know if that widening that they're going to do is existing right away. So I just want to make sure nothing needs to change up there with that project that's ongoing.
Yes, Councilman George, thanks for the comment. We'll certainly coordinate with Endot on their project that they're working on now and anything they expect to build in the future.
Okay. And then the other two things, and I haven't fully looked at it, I'll look at it between now and when it comes back, and I know all the other council members will as well, but just, I just want to look at the full uses in the C3, just to make sure, you know, you've crossed out a few. I just want to make sure, and I'd recommend everybody doing the same. And then the other thing is, I understand you've got the easements and things like that, so you're modifying some of the landscaping, but I don't know if we can put those somewhere else. So just take a look at maybe other areas on the site where maybe the tree needed to be here, but it can be moved elsewhere. Because I think that there's a pretty favorable ruling, a couple items above this. So we helped with the roads and things like that, so I think we made the site very viable. But let's make sure, I'd rather, if we can move things as opposed to eliminating them, I think that's a better way to go.
Thank you, David. Other comments? Do a motion have first reading?
So moved.
We've had first reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 18 on the agenda, ordinance 071816A, request to approve a text amendment to the northwest corner of 116th and Oleo Road PUD and zoning commitments regarding delivery times and access to 118th Street. We're having first reading on this as well.
All right, for the next case before you tonight, this involves a text amendment to the Kroger PUD. This is at Oleo and 116th Street. And the items that we're looking at tonight involve amending the language within the PUD document itself, as well as within the zoning commitments related to this site. So as you know, Kroger is in the process of constructing a new grocery store on the site. It's west of the existing store. It's about 120,000 square feet. The current store would be demolished. So one of the changes that Kroger would like to make to their existing PUD relates to a provision that deals with trash removal and deliveries. So this is what the statement says. It says, "A trash removal, compaction, service vehicles, deliveries, parking lot sweepers shall not be permitted between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, with the exception of snow removal." Kroger believes that this clause is too restrictive to their delivery operations, and they feel that since the majority of nearby residential neighbors, which are those in the Russell subdivision along 118th Street to the north, will soon be moving out to make way for the development of extra space storage, that this restriction should be lifted. The other modification that they're looking to make relates to those zoning commitments, and there's a clause in there that states, "If there is unanimous consent in writing amongst owners of the residential property along the north side of 118th Street to have vehicular ingress or egress into the shopping center from 118th, Kroger shall agree to provide the full access." So if many of you will recall, the clause was originally inserted into the zoning commitments as a way to satisfy neighbors on 118th Street. Some of those neighbors wanted a vehicular connection into the Kroger property as they believed it would enhance the viability of commercial land uses on their street. And now with all residents on 118th moving out in the near future, Kroger feels that this clause is no longer needed. So they intend to reconfigure the access point to contain a sidewalk-only and no vehicular access. And here's a diagram of what it would look like on the site plan, just showing pedestrian access out to 118th Street. So with that, we as staff recommend that you hold first reading, provide feedback, and send this item to the plant commission for review. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those, and the applicant from Kroger is here as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Adam?
Yeah, Adam, if you can, for planning commission, can we go back and look at some of the other properties around Fishers? The Walmart comes to mind. There's a number of other properties there, which deal with trash pickup, et cetera, where we don't have the neighbors behind. I want to make sure we're maintaining consistency, so at least we can tell the planning commission that. I think that was, the other one I don't really have a problem with, I just want to make sure, as we go through there, I want the full planning commission to have the idea what, be consistent as we're approaching all of this, so.
I think Pete's spot on, and I was going to ask the same thing, because I know that overall, I thought in many commercial areas, we have a certain timing. Now, this is a PUD, I don't know if that one trumps the others, so just take a look at that coming back. But I was saying at the same time.
Right?
Just to point a reference, our thoroughfare plan requires all commercial to access thoroughfare, so our thoroughfare plan calls for the access on 118th.
I think we probably. But warrant our engineering department weighing into you from a traffic perspective. I don't know, Adam, if they've had a chance to comment, but that might be helpful for the plant commission to hear from our engineering staff on the interplay with 118th Street and traffic and all that. So we'll probably, we'll get you a memo on that as well.
If you guys could help me remember, was the delivery time window, was that something that we negotiated through the process? Or was that, is that something that's just standard? I guess it's piggybacking on.
It's not a standard. It was a PUD negotiation to that neighborhood, unique to that specific neighborhood and the residential concerns. So with the residents no longer being on the north side and changing to commercial, they made the request.
Domino effect.
Yeah.
One removes the.
There has been a lot of what I would call active participation by various stakeholders in the area around those four corners. Those PUDs were negotiated hugely.
Right.
Okay, so it's a lot that, I wouldn't say that's standard, anyway.
Right.
Scott?
Well, no PUD is standard, that's the essence of a PUD. So yeah, this is not a common element in the UDO. I think it's, and when you ask about consistency among all of our commercial, I mean, there's no, there's no consistent standard among all of our commercial around when you can pick up trash and when you cannot. We have an overarching noise ordinance around, but that wouldn't, someone dropping off something at a business unless they were doing something extremely noisy would not violate the noise ordinance.
And that's what I.
Yeah. So from my perspective, when Kroger approached me about this, given the fact that the residential component is changing, it does warrant consideration.
And that's where, I guess, what I was trying to figure out, is if this was something that we negotiated early on for a specific reason, you know, I'd be hesitant to pull it off just for that, but if it's because of the residential thing, then.
It's, yeah, that one, Pete's exactly right. I mean, in the very, very beginning, I guess I'm, I'm not the oldest, I'm the longest-serving, so. But quite honestly, in that area, it had a lot of residential that really came out. So I think part of that, we'll find out, it goes to plant commission as a public hearing, so we'll go to all the neighbors, everybody get a letter, and we'll see what.
Yeah.
People.
Thanks.
And we'll address it at that time.
Can you also clarify, because I was under the impression, too, that the church that's going in next door wants to open 118th Street. So I'm kind of in.
Well.
Trying to clarify what the future's going to be with all that, so.
I think to be clear, that church, as of tonight, when they spoke to us, that's in the second phase of their construction, so they don't have any plans immediately to open that up. At some point, there may be a connection through to their, to their side. Is that correct, Adam?
That's correct.
So nothing in the foreseeable future. That's in phase two of the church, if and when they get the funding available to expand that.
In terms of just costs, like putting a sidewalk now and then later on, like, is there an impact there or just take the?
Well, yeah, there are a couple, I think there are two different issues. The idea of having an access point go from their parking lot directly over to 118th Street, and then your ability to get out on 118th Street is different than the 118th Street going all the way through to the church. So whether or not the church connects or not is not relevant to whether or not you as a council decide that it'd be best to go ahead and punch that road through so people could get out onto 118th Street and then onto Oleo Road. That's really the, to me, the ultimate question. That's really the, to me, the ultimate question, is if that benefits from a traffic perspective, allowing people to get out and then go over to 118th Street. There's definitely a, yeah, a series of questions to be answered in that regard. But that's where I think engineering needs to probably weigh in on this.
Where does the storage unit that's being built across from that, where do they stand out on this issue? Do they have a preference one way or the other?
I don't, I'm not sure.
Yes, Mr. Stiller, I was told that they are supportive of Kroger removing this stipulation that was in the zoning commitments. Beyond that, I would let them comment directly on it.
Okay.
Other questions?
Scott, I want to hear the, I want to hear the mayor's recommendation from the engineering.
Yeah, I think to Brad's point about the thoroughfare, I mean, there's a general consensus that we have that we want to connect things together. And so we need to look at a traffic perspective here. What's the best for traffic flow for the city regarding this particular issue? We just need to get Jeff and Steve Fairbach involved and figure out what that looks like.
Just one point on that. The main entrance right now to get out of there is a left turn, straight across, because there's access across, and a right turn. So it takes three lanes to get out of Kroger. On 118th, there is nothing across the street, so it would only take a left turn or a right turn. So you have less traffic at 118th Street. If we can ever convince the county, 118th Street might be a better place to put the stoplight, because it's further away from 116th and Oleo, and there's only two lanes coming out, not three lanes coming out. So from an engineering standpoint, 118th, I'm not the PE, I'm only the LS, but I think 118th might be better than Oleo, so that's why...
I think we'll, I'll have Fairbach take a real hard look at that and see what's in the best interest for the city in regard to that. Because I don't disagree, I just think it needs to be looked at.
Sure. Other questions or comments?
Not first reading.
We've had first reading. Thank you. Moving on to item 19 on the agenda, ordinance 071816B, request to approve a rezone from R2 to PUDC and a new PUD district ordinance and concept plan regarding approximately one acre at 13862 Cumberland Road.
All right, the next case before you tonight is referred to as the Rhodes rezoning, or PUD. Now, the petitioner on the case is Scott Rhodes of Nationwide Insurance, and he's asking you to hold first reading. And this would involve a rezone from R2 to PUDC, and it would include a new PUD district ordinance and concept plan, and we're dealing with approximately one acre out at 13862 Cumberland Road. So Mr. Rhodes currently has an agency on Lantern Road in downtown Fishers. It's north of North Street, south of the Meyer and Agum construction building. As part of a proposed new downtown economic development project, his property would be purchased and demolished to make way for a new commercial development. Mr. Rhodes already owns an existing single-family home out on Cumberland Road. It's a rental property, and he would like to convert the home into an office for his agency. He would renovate the structure for an office use exclusively, not mixed use, and he would submit construction plans for an improvement location permit, which would be reviewed by the technical advisory committee for a new parking lot. Here's an overview, an aerial shot of the property. And then here's a current street-side photo. The PUD document allows for some flexibility in setback landscaping and lighting standards, given the constraints of the existing site and the existing building. However, the standards that are crafted in the PUD would apply to a new structure as well, in the event that the existing home is ever removed. So for this site, as part of the PUD, only an office use is allowed. All other uses are prohibited. The zoning would follow the C1 development standards for any UDO standard, not modified by this PUD. And with that, we are supportive of the request. We recommend that you conduct first reading, provide feedback, and send this item to the plant commission for review. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, Adam, if I can, is it currently in the incorporated city of Fishers?
Mr. Peterson, no, it's currently unincorporated, but there is a clause within the PUD that would require that they annex.
Is it on city services?
I'm sorry?
Is it on city services?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so let's make sure we at least address that when we go to planning commission as well, because that will certainly be one of my requirements, as well as what we normally do.
Other questions?
Ben, any input from the neighbors at this point?
No, Mr. Dreamer, not at this time. The plant commission will have that formal public hearing, and they'll be notified via mail and newspaper and signage.
Any questions or comments? If none, I will, we've had first reading. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 20, ordinance 071816C, request to approve updates to 2016 Nickelplate District Code. First reading.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dale Davis. I'm a planner with the Department of Community Development. Before you tonight, as a set of updates to our Nickelplate District Code, we try to bring this back about annually, just so we can keep up with what development's currently happening and be responsive to the trends that we're seeing, and also keep the code up to date with the tools that staff needs to make sure we're moving forward. So the request before you tonight is two parts. One part is a rezone to add three neighborhoods to the Nickelplate District, and those would all be in the Village Center District, primarily for residential and live-work type products. And those areas are this triangle, which is between Lantern, the railroad tracks, and just south of Alhuta. There is a small neighborhood, Maple Dell. It is just at the entrance to Sunbeam, or Sunblast, and the Morgan Drive, Morgan Meadows area. Those older neighborhoods would be brought into the Nickelplate Code so we can master-plan them as part of the code and address some development pressure for single-family residential and live-work spaces, so it happens a little more planned and a little more organically. The other component is a series of text amendments that come in to deal with expanding the Nickelplate Code into working with smaller products. Right now, the code is geared very much towards the larger product, something that's going to fill up an entire site. So these text amendments will allow us to dial into something that's smaller, and it also updates our street sections and our other standards so that we can really expand out into these areas. And it's also necessary as these three neighborhoods are in somewhat of a transition between the established Nickelplate and other established neighborhoods. These areas, if we don't come in and master-plan them to begin with, it may be very sporadic what happens in there, and we don't know that the standards are necessarily where they currently need to be to keep these neighborhoods to a high standard. So with that, staff asks for the first reading to be held, send this to plant commission for the public hearing. Also, would like to note that we're having a public open house, time from 4:30 to 6:30 on August 2nd. It also went out with a notice, just to ask the neighbors, if you have any concerns, if you want to spend some time with staff, we'll be here, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Take a motion at first reading.
At first reading.
We've had first reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 21, the agenda, ordinance 071816D, request to approve ordinance amending to 2016 salary ordinance. First, second, third reading.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Cece Conover, Human Resources Director. Before you this evening for your consideration is an amendment to the salary ordinance. I'm requesting that two job titles be added to the salary ordinance. One of the job titles is Traffic Technician for the Engineering Department, and the other title is Debt and Financial Analyst for the Controller's Office. Those worked with the department heads of the respective departments in evaluating some of their needs, and these titles have been reviewed, job descriptions have been created, and grades have been assigned for them for your consideration.
Any questions for Cece?
I just had a question. Can you just briefly describe what are the duties of these two new positions? Just wondering what they're going to be, their main responsibilities will be.
Sure, I didn't bring those job descriptions with me tonight, but for the Debt and Financial Analyst position, that would be working with a lot of the, obviously, the debt that is managed in the Controller's Office. The Financial Analyst would be doing some work in, again, in Oscar's office, working with some of the budget information. The Traffic Technician would be working with some of the signaling and some of the traffic flows and supporting the engineering group.
Maybe I could add a little color to that. From the Controller's Office, I think as we become more sophisticated in what we're doing, we need a skill set to be able to actually do some pretty analytical work around questions like, does it make sense to contract something out, or should we do it in-house? Those kind of financial analysis, we have not done to date, because we haven't really had the skill sets. So specifically, marketing to the employment world, this is, these are the type of tools we're looking for. We hope to find a candidate with a little higher caliber financial skill set. As for the Traffic Technician, I could say pretty much the same thing, in that today, within the Engineering Department, several different people own a little bit of our traffic conversation. And what we really want is someone who can full-time own signal timings. When residents complain about traffic congestion in their neighborhood, we want someone to own that. When we have things like we just had about Kroger, about the traffic flow in that parking area, we want to be able to consult individuals that their, single-handedly, their only job in the city of Fishers is to help figure out how to move traffic more efficiently. Now, to that point, and why we want to do this now, we have found the money in our current operating budgets, and secondly, we're not even sure what the market bears for these types of skill sets. So we're putting the titles together, putting the job descriptions together. We're going to go out to the market and see if there's viable candidates for this. We hope that there are, that we could hire with in-house, but just not sure at this point, because take, take a Traffic Technician, for instance, that may be pretty tough to get the technical skill sets that we want to bring him in-house, but we're going to try and see if we can't find someone, because the workload is certainly there with the city to be working full-time. So those are probably just, we're looking for a little more technical skill set that the generic titles that we've had in the past don't, don't cut it.
So maybe I can frame that a little bit differently, Mr. Mayor, as in fact, what I just heard is that you found some people that are going to more effectively run your departments in the city, and what my concern is, is from what I heard from you, you're going to have zero effect on your budget, and you're not coming back and asking us for more money.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions or comment for Cece? Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and pass on first reading?
So moved.
Do we have a motion by Pete, a second by Eric, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Do we have a motion approved? Have a motion by Todd, do we have a second? Second by Eric, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to item 22, ordinance 071816E, request to approve an ordinance approving and pledging coat funding for a garage lease and public lease for the north of North Project. First, second, third reading. Good evening, Rick.
Good evening. My name is Rick Hall from Barnes and Thornburg, the city's bond council. You have before you an ordinance to approve two leases that would allow the city to fund its contribution to the north of North Project. As you recall, last month, the city council approved a project agreement that called for the city to make a contribution of approximately $16.5 million to the project in the form of paying the cost of the construction of a garage, and then also other project costs. The way that this financing is structured is the same way that the other similar projects of the city have been structured, the Jaeger project, the Loftus-Robinson project, the Meyer and Agum project, the depot out here. And that is, the city will issue bonds, they will loan the proceeds of those bonds to the building corporation. The building corporation will lease to the redevelopment commission the garage that's being built, and also 106, a portion of 116th Street under these leases. And then the redevelopment commission will pay lease rentals from the city's coat that then in turn will pay the debt service on the bonds. And that sounds like a lot of steps to go through, I know. At one point, Scott asked me to prepare a diagram for this, which I did.
It's not helpful.
So, but the, but the upshot is the way, the reason we do this is when you have a joint project like this with the developer, it allows the developer to construct the project and do the bidding, and then the city make its contribution, all in one seamless relationship with the contractors. So as Oscar said earlier this evening, with each of those other projects, Meyer and Agum, Jaeger, and Loftus-Robinson, the city council removed the pledge of coat to those bonds. This, these leases have the pledge of coat, so the relief of that, of the lien of the other bonds on our coat revenue stream should allow us to get a better rating on these bonds. We would request that it be approved on all three readings to stay on a timetable that would provide for a closing in mid-September, which is what the developer projects is their start date. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Rick at this point? Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? Do we have a second? Second by Eric, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Do we have a motion approved? Motion by Pete, do we have a second? By Eric, all's in favor, please say aye.
John, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a quick statement. While I was against the project and its funding level, and I think I shared that was just primarily the amount of the request, I think at this point, given that it passed with an eight-to-one vote, I am going to support this. It seems like the most logical way to fund the project, so I think, you know, to me, that's history, so I'm just, for the record, stating why I'm changing my vote.
Thank you, Rich. Again, we have a motion, a second. All's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Eyes have it. Any unfinished or new business? If there's not, I'll take a motion adjourned. Have a motion, do we have a second? By Todd, all's in favor, please say aye. Aye. We're adjourned. Have a great week.